And welcome to the February 20th, 2013 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, which we have a quorum present. I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First thing on today's agenda is to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2013, and the February 6th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one item in our old business today, and that would be a PUD amendment request for approximately 18 acres along Swan Home Drive, consisting of parcel L of Victory Station PUD gross builders this applicant. Ms. Trautalot?
Thank you Chairman Lamb. The item that's before you today is a matter of old business from our February 6th meeting. During our meeting on February 6th, we conducted a public hearing to consider the amendments to the Victory Station PUD parcel L. And I think the name of the development there was the Beldin Reserve. One of the items of discussion during the public hearing from quite a number of the residents in the subdivision to the south called Scotland Glen was whether or not the street called Roxbury Court should be extended from their subdivision, which terminates in their north line of the subdivision, should be extended to Swan Home Drive. The Planning Commission discussed the matter, and then asked that the planning staff return today with a report with additional information and some additional maps. It helps the Planning Commission to understand the dynamics of the street. Also, the Planning Commission asked that I have members of the various departments here to help provide testimony. So with that, before I get too much further in my presentation, I'd like to invite them to come up here and stand with me. Members of the police, fire, solid waste, traffic, water and sewer, y'all join me at the microphone, because part of my job, I represent these departments. And today, I want them to stand with me as we make this presentation to you and offer to answer your questions, because this is an issue that we view as an important matter. I want you to know that I have discussed this with our city manager. I have discussed it with the city manager's leadership team, and we all are united in our belief that this street needs to be extended. First of all, we have a map, and there is a map. And Ms. Ely, if you could put that on the first map in the agenda on the screen, it helps you to see where the street is located. The street is located, of course, on the east side of the area that's colored orange, and the Scotland, excuse me, Scottish Glen subdivision is the subdivision to the south that is zoned RS10. You'll see that this parcel fronts on Swan Home Drive. With the very early plans for this property, and that being with the Victory Station PUD, which was studied and developed during the late 1990s, the Planning Commission envisioned that a street would extend from the Victory Station PUD, at that time, as an extension of Fortress Boulevard, through the area that's colored orange, down to Victory Station. There was a traffic study that was part of that plan, and it was ultimately adopted as the Victory Station PUD. Incidentally, that plan also expects that Swan Home Drive will extend westward to intersect with Rucker Lane. At about the same time that we were working on the PUD for Victory Station, we were also working on the Blackman Land use study. The Blackman Land use study had a very heavy transportation component to it. That plan also included the same street extension through the Victory Station PUD down to Scotland, excuse me, Scottish Glen, to provide another north-south connection for this landmass, including subdivision to the south, to get back to Highway 96. The city's Blackman Land use study, which is adopted in 2000, also included policies that the connectivity of streets within the Blackman community is an integral part of the transportation plan, in order to avoid overburdening arterial roadways whenever possible street connections between adjacent subdivisions should be made. That was a policy statement in our Blackman Land use study, and that was shown in the transportation element of that plan. That was before the development began either in the Victory Station or in the Scottish Glen subdivision. So that laid the groundwork for the street network that was to come about. In the fall of 2007, when we saw the amendment to Victory Station parcel L for the Madison, this street connection was a part of that plan. Also, with the subdivision plan for Scottish Glen subdivision, Roxbury Court was part of the plan. So we've been expecting it. We've been planning for it. We have been counting on it. One of the reasons that street dead ends as it does, with more than two lots at the end of it, is because we expected the street to extend through and not be ended as a stub street at the property line. And we did not make provisions for it to cul-de-sac, because we expected it to be a north-south street to be able to get back to Highway 96. The plan, we have shows the extension, and it is not something that is going to be of a great benefit to Victory Station parcel L, quite simply because there are no destinations to the south that the future residents of that subdivision are going to want to access. On the other hand, it is a service delivery issue for the city and for the residents in the Old South subdivision and in the Scottish Glen. It is all about those people having another way out of their development and their subdivision, and another way in for the city to be able to get services like fire protection, police protection, solid waste, and transportation, and bus service. By the way, I did discuss with our city's school department, and they are very supportive of this street connection, because it helps with their transportation program. You've seen my reports. You've seen the exhibits. We have our staff with you. They're available here to answer your questions and to urge that the Planning Commission stick with the plan and make this street connection as a public street.
Okay. Does any of the department representatives have any statements they'd like to make?
I'm Roy Fields with the Murfreesboro Police Department. Thank you for hearing me today. I think this connection is very important from an emergency services standpoint, not only in case you have an emergency and something gets blocked as one way in and one way out, where we can provide those services, but also on normal everyday traffic. And what I mean by that is, is an example would be if we had someone who possibly burglarized a home on one side, if we didn't have access to get to the other side, someone on foot would be able to elude us better if we didn't have direct access. So oftentimes, that's not brought into consideration when we start talking about emergency services, which are so apparent about delivering those should an access get blocked from one way or the other. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have from that perspective.
Any questions for Chief Fields?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Carl Pease. I'm Assistant Fire Marshal with Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue. We like the addition of this street connection through to Swan Home for a number of reasons. For one, if you currently need to access the Scottish Glen subdivision, we have to go down Rucker Lane. Currently, Rucker Lane is a very narrow street. I know it's got plans for upgrades in the future, but we don't know exactly when that upgrade's going to take place. And on the map here, it don't depict where our fire stations are on this map, but currently, that particular subdivision is protected by the Casey Lane Station. It also is protected by the Florence Road Station, which is to the north. For engine nine from Casey Lane to respond to Scottish Glen subdivision, currently, we have to come down Old Fort Parkway, turn on Rucker Lane, then turn into a single access off Rucker Lane into Scottish Glen. If there had been an accident, or if there was an accident, say on Meadow, I think it's called Meadowwood Drive, that blocked Rucker Lane, we would have no access to that subdivision. We would actually have to turn around and physically either go to Veterans Parkway and come around to 99 and come off that way, or go back to St. Andrews and cut across. So you could see where the delay would be extreme. The station coming from, the engine coming from Florence, currently, has to come down Florence Road, down Manson Pike, up Fortress, again, turning onto Old Fort Parkway, back onto Rucker Road. With this new connection, that engine, or even the first engine in, if there is a problem on Rucker Lane, they can revert down Swan Home or Swan Home Drive and hit Roxbury Court and come in the back way. So it's a time issue for us. And I'd like to point out, too, I'm sure everybody remembers '09, the tornado that came through here in '09. It hit several of our subdivisions. Fortunately, we had multiple points of access. I'll give you an example. The subdivision I was in was off Hanes Drive, Regency Park area. We had access from Sulfur Springs Road. We had access from Hanes Drive to the west. We had access from Hanes Drive from the east. We also had access from Regency Park from the north. So we had multiple points to get in and out of those subdivisions. Yes, we do have a couple of points in the, I guess that would be, I'm not sure, the subdivision to the south?
Old South Estates.
Old South Estates. There are a couple of streets that do connect into Scottish Glen, but as you see, it's a time issue. We'd have to go down Rucker Road, cut into a county subdivision, work our way back to, I believe, the closest street would be Rampart, and then to Terre Trace. But we'd have to actually leave the city limits to come into the county to go back into the city. With this current proposal of this street, we've got two prime access points for our engines. I actually watched the Planning Commission when you had the public hearing, and I understand the public's concern. I understand they like a quiet street, and we do, too. But when you start getting into emergency services and we need to get in there quickly, sometimes the extra street helps tremendously. As far as the proposal for the apartment complex, their main entrance is going to be to the north, coming off Fortress. I don't believe it's Fortress now. I believe it's called Battalion Boulevard. I don't see where the individuals would want to go through that side street, back through a county subdivision, or through a city subdivision, to get back to Old Fort Parkway, when they can shoot right out the front, the street right in front of them. There's several things that we could do as far as the proposed project, to maybe help eliminate traffic, but I think we definitely need, from an emergency services standpoint, we need that secondary connection for time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Could you tell me approximately how many residents are in the subdivision that is in question?
I'm not sure how many. I would say 100, 150, maybe? I'm guessing.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm Joey Smith with the Solid Waste Department, and as my esteemed colleagues have already said about the emergency side, we provide service over on the Scotland Acres every Thursday. So we run a automated garbage truck. It's 33 feet long, picking up garbage. And being over there last Thursday at the stub end, if we have to go in and pick up three homes on the right-hand side, we're going to have to pull in, and then we're going to be backing out blind, because even when a pickup truck, when you come up to the corner up there at the crossroad, you still have to sort of ease a pickup truck out and look left and right. Well, a garbage truck does not have that luxury. We may have a camera on the back and a camera shooting down the sides, but they do not allow us to have the cameras like they do in the Apache Attack helicopter, where their eyes look, it moves that way. It's sort of a fixed point. And I do not like the fact that we're going to try to set somebody up to fail, because it's 52 days out of the year that we'll be servicing those five or six homes right there in that dead end stub, and that's just on garbage collection. We also have our limbs and brush collection, which is almost every two weeks, so you cut that in half, so you've got another 30-foot truck in there picking up limbs and brush. And as Chief Field said, when they do start the road project on Rucker Lane, whenever that is, that gives us an access point to be able to pick up in that area without, and it's actually, I think, 161 homes that we're actually picking up in there now. So, and they're growing every day, because I think we'll probably add another home or car or two next week into the subdivision if it gets completed and we get a certificate of occupancy. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Dana Richardson, City's Transportation Director. Mr. Trautalot did a good job, I think, of laying out our concerns and so forth. And the philosophy of interconnecting these neighborhoods lies basically in the distribution of traffic, instead of forcing them all out at one point, is to be able to distribute them over multiple access. We try to do that consistently across Murfreesboro, and certainly, that philosophy's been embodied in at least two specific traffic studies that Ms. Trautalot referenced over the last 15 years. So this has been something that we've been consistently looking for and pursuing. The point he made about the cut-through traffic, I think, is, if you look at the map, would be quite obvious, is there is no destination south of this, and that outside traffic would have very little use in migrating southward through this subdivision, as opposed to the people in the southern subdivisions having a definite reason to migrate northern. Northward, being Fortress Boulevard certainly comes back into Murfreesboro via Fortress Boulevard and Medical Center Parkway, and of course, both of those tie into 96, which is certainly the direct access back into the heart of Murfreesboro. The one very big concern that we do have would be how we address traffic during the reconstruction of Rucker Lane. Right now, that's in our capital improvement budget for 2014 funding for construction. That's going to be a very difficult project to build. Anytime that we try to take a two-lane road and physically widen that to three-lane, we have to do it under traffic operations, so anything that we can do to minimize the traffic on any roadway during that construction project is very beneficial to the construction process. So for those reasons, I think that certainly we would add our support to maintaining the connection, as has been discussed and planned for the last 15 years. Be glad to answer any questions.
When do you think the Rucker Lane project will start?
We currently have it in our, I think, our capital improvement budget for 2014, depending on economic issues and some other things. That may change that, and it's subject certainly to council approval for our upcoming capital improvement plan as we slide along those several years, but that is what we're looking at at this point in time.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Richardson?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Trautalot, do you have anything else?
No, sir. I think that we have summarized our beliefs about the street, and we'll be glad to answer your questions about that. I will also point out that Mr. Randy Caldwell is present. If you have questions about the PUD that go beyond the street, he did attempt to draw a cul-de-sac. I think that he found that the cul-de-sac causes some problems, maybe cascades into a series of changes into the plan, that the developer would prefer not to have to do after he looked at it closely and began to cost out those changes. He's available and present to present on that if you have questions. Otherwise, it's your responsibility to discuss this matter and then formulate a recommendation to council on the original plan.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to hear from Mr. Caldwell. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you guys coming up today. Thank you very much for your input. Mr. Caldwell, we talked briefly about the landscaping that would shield headlights from intruding upon the properties in Scottish Glen.
Yes, sir, we did. And actually, got a couple just quick exhibits here. We went out, actually, oops, here we go. We actually went out to the site over, you know, since we were last before you, and actually took some pictures. And again, I think what you were referring to is on the south edge, where we have the parking garages, and we kind of have the gaps where the parking spaces actually are there. You know, we took some pictures of the existing tree line along those edges to give you an indication of how thick that is, but we also went back and basically modified the plan to basically pull up some evergreen trees at that edge so that we would sufficiently screen the headlights on that, which will be a very effective screening element for that. So that will be fortunate to get passed today. That's something we'll incorporate in the pattern book, modify that as it goes to council.
Will you be disturbing the existing tree line in any way?
No, sir. We've been very careful, even as part of when we did this back, when it was called Madison and Victory Station, we stayed off those tree root zones. You know, we'll obviously be putting up the tree protection fencing as a grade there, but that tree line is pretty limited to that property line, so it's easy for us to stay off that. So we won't be disturbing that in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Caldwell? I think everybody's ready to go to lunch, settle.
Okay. And we do appreciate the staff. I mean, we concur with their recommendations. I think under normal circumstances, you'd have a developer and engineer high-fiving each other after the meeting last week, thinking we might not have to build a road, but there are, as Joseph said, some cascading effects or result that that does get taken away of that we have some concern about, and we're very willing and able to build that as part of this. So thank you.
Thank you. I've been out there twice. The neighbors invited us to come out there and look at the road situation. I've been out there twice since our last meeting, and I really tend to agree with the department heads for the city. In fact, I think the extension of this road would probably help eliminate some of the traffic on Scottish Drive that may, from residents of the eastern side of the subdivision, that have to use Scottish Drive to access Rucker Lane. Once this road is complete, they'll have a straight shot over to Swan Home Drive and right out to 96, which should take a couple minutes off the travel time to town and be a lot better route for them as far as getting out there and not having to negotiate the streets of the subdivision. Any other comments or questions by members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, this body and the council has a long history of connectivity. I'm not sure that's a word, but we're going to use it here. And I think it's paid off, and you can look at many different subdivisions all across the city where connectivity is important. This proposal was created in 2000, so it's 13 years old, with the connectivity from one area of the Swanson property to the area south, which is now the subdivision in question. And you look at the health and safety issues and the emergency services issues in this. We've heard testimony from the department heads about how critical that is to the development of not only this subdivision, but the apartment complex and the surrounding areas, which will be a relatively dense, densely populated area. One of the concerns the neighbors had, and they brought up, is that this will create a lot of traffic going through their neighborhood. After studying the maps, and I'm very familiar with the subdivision also, Mr. Lamb, I've been out there several times, not as recently as last week, but I'm very familiar with the area. I don't see that there's a destination why the apartment complex people would want to come through this connection. There's no place to go. There's just not any place for them to go. I can see the neighbors using this connection to get out much more than the apartment complex. So when you look at the history of our connectivity and the emergency services recommendations, health and safety issue, I just feel like that we need to approve this project with the road cut-through. So I'll make that as a motion.
Motion is made. Was that a second? Okay. Motion is made.
Make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I just want to say, I do appreciate very much all the city heads taking the time to come out and speak to us today and remind us of the importance of these connections. I think we got, I certainly got a little sidetracked on the fact that there were other connections in the subdivision, but did not look at the fact that those other connections all just went back to Rucker Lane. And Rucker Lane, you know, obviously, as we've all discussed, is going to need that work, and I just think it makes a lot of sense to have the other connection out from 96. So appreciate all of their time to come out and speak with us today.
Okay. Motion is made, and thank you to all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda portion of our agenda today. We have seven items on the consent agenda, but item C and D pertaining to Chestnut Hill have been moved to the Plats and Plans portion. So as I read the consent agenda, I'll eliminate C and D. First of all, the first item on the consent agenda is the Enclave Section 1, a master plan and preliminary plat for 31 lots on 9.55 acres zoned PRD located along Bentley Drive, Bob Parks developer. Indigo Property Section 1, a master plan for the preliminary plat of 41 lots on 11.6 acres zoned RS8 along Wonder View Drive, Wilson Bacon Trust is the developer. Item E, Randy S. Fan Avenue Site Plan, excuse me, Randy Fan, South Manny Avenue Site Plan. I'll get it right in a minute. 5,848 square feet, an office retail building on .63 acres on Commercial Highway, and CCO located at 409 and 423 South Manny Avenue and 407 East Castle Street, Randy Fan is the developer. A mandatory referral for a sanitary sewer easement relocation to serve the proposed development to be located at 2012 Memorial Boulevard, Walmart Real Estate Business is the applicant. And the final item is a mandatory referral for a water line easement relocation to serve the proposed industrial expansion located at 1501 West Malloy Lane, Johnson Controls is applicant. Of these items that I've read, is there anybody on the Planning Commission, any member of the staff or the today's audience, like any of those items removed from the consent agenda for additional discussion? If not, I'll request a motion.
Mr. Chairman, recommend approval?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Move on to the first two items under our Plats and Plans, and like I previously said, excuse me, no, we'll go to Gateway first. We have three items under the Gateway Design Overlay Region this afternoon, the first of which is Robert Rose Village West, which is a master plan for 37.45 acres on Commercial Highway and GDO1 located along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive, North Church LLC is the developer. Ms. Trautalot?
Okay.
You told me wrong.
Well, Ms. Trautalot told me in a meeting yesterday that he'd present this one, but I'd be glad to.
Okay.
What you're being asked to review this afternoon is a master plan for some property located along the south side of Medical Center Parkway. I've got an ortho photograph of the property in your packages and also on the screen. This property is located south of Medical Center Parkway. It's also contiguous with and located along the western side of Robert Rose Drive. And on the opposite side is the Avenue's Development. You can see that from the ortho. That would be the Anchor Store and the Avenue's Belk. That's the closest building there, but you can see the parking lot. It shares an access point also to Maple Grove Drive, which comes off of Medical Center Parkway. You have received a couriered copy, too, of the master plan, Robert Rose Village West Master Plan, and this is a large property, and I think that the owner has some big hopes and dreams for the property. And of course, part of good planning is actually looking forward to what will be needed to serve the property, whether that's access or our utilities, zoning, and those sorts of matters. So he has hired Mr. Matt Taylor, who's in the audience this afternoon, to come up with a master plan for the property. I believe that the intent will be that portions of the property will be sold off to different developers, but having a master plan will provide an opportunity to have a cohesive development for the responsibility of development, maybe parts of the streetscape master plan, so everybody knows who's responsible for installing which parts of that, and also to provide that guiding document. I don't know, Mr. Taylor, would you like to come up to the lectern and go over the plan as proposed? And I think we'll probably have some comments after Mr. Taylor's presentation.
Sure. The master plan was in two parts. We did it through our plans as well as through the booklet. The booklet was aimed more to reinforce some of the gateway overlay, streetscape items. Really, there's nothing new in there that you don't see with each site plan, but it does help the main developer, property owner here, as individual property owners come in, to let them know what their responsibilities are going to be and what is going to be expected out here before they ever come talk to the city or come before this body. We do envision basically the same development pattern that we've seen to the west proceeding to the east here. Would desire some out parcels along Medical Center and Robert Rose, some large commercial user anchor in that center, and round out the rear with some multifamily, which is a much-needed a much-needed use in our gateway. I think we're seeing more, more desire for that out here in this area. Outside of that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Taylor, and this is where I'm, part of where I want to come in. Part of the plan on Page 6 includes a, the master plan itself, and it shows the three different colors, the blue being a multifamily, and that's on the agenda later on for rezoning application.
Yes, sir.
The gold is some out parcels. One of them is on the agenda for a subdivision plat of preliminary and final. And then there's an area that's red that's remaining zone Commercial Highway that is undesignated, but we've had some meetings to discuss a large user on that property. But one of the things this plan shows is the interconnectivity. I want the planning commission members to look at that. Would you discuss a little bit about the connectivity and how that's to be achieved and what we're trying to accomplish? This picture, though it looks simple, conveys a very big meaning. I want you to talk a little bit about the direct access to Medical Center, how that's going to be controlled, and then the access back to the avenues and to Robert Rose and Maple Grove.
The illustration you described is available on our computer, so if the cable department wants to put it on the screen, then folks will be able to see what you just described.
We'll start at Medical Center. We have restricted that to a single access point, which will have a right turn lane into that, as well as we'll go ahead and continue that right turn lane all the way down to Robert Rose. Robert Rose does have a right turn lane now, but we'll be taking out a little bit there to make it a continuous right turn lane, just like what you see in front of the avenue right now. And then we'll have one leg, one access point in between Robert Rose and Maple Grove Drive, which you see colored red there. Both, both the out parcels, which we've identified as out parcel one and number five, will have access off of that. They will not have any direct access off of Medical Center Parkway. We've kind of guesstimated where those will be, but those can move back and forth once we get a, some individual site plans coming in there. The large red tract, we envision it having a, an access off of Maple Grove Drive, as well as a access back off Robert Rose, but that will likely come through out parcel four. It could be part of parcel two, the red parcel, but there could be some, definitely interconnectivity there. And then we see, we envision one more access off of Robert Rose for these commercial tracks, which will be a shared access for parcel four and five. We're trying to come up with a happy medium there on separation from that, of that access point from the intersectional Medical Center, Robert Rose, but close enough to the corner that it does not restrict and ultimately, you know, harm the access value and usability of out parcel five. With the median in Medical Center Parkway there, it would, without that access point, it would heavily restrict how people got to that parcel. And then we also believe the multifamily site would have its own access point further down Robert Rose, away from the other uses and access points, to serve as a primary entry points. And the developer, owner of this property is also trying to secure a possible access point back over into the Avenue Shopping Center. All that is private over there, so he's trying to negotiate those access rights. And if those are granted, then have that access point, which we've shown kind of dashed in. The design of that access between Robert Rose and Avenue could take a variety of looks and designs, anything from kind of a back alley situation, which we see at the Oaks between Robert Rose Drive there and Medical Center Parkway, or it could be more of a proper road, depending on what that ultimate user is there. Regardless, we will, would like to see a secondary entrance from the multifamily site on that back portion of the property there. And you'll see that we've drawn it a northerly and southerly direction there.
And along the south side of Lot 2, which is just north of Lot 3, you're looking at a interconnectivity between Robert Rose Drive and the avenues.
The avenues, yes, sir.
That will have some very important traffic ramifications for bleeding some of the traffic out of the intersections, or traffic that's going from Robert Rose to the avenues. Part of this will be a, most of this will be private in nature, but what we're trying to do is secure the correct balance of interconnections and through traffic, at the same time allowing for development without, without having the required setbacks of a public street in some instances.
The possible connection to the Avenue Shopping Center that's shown there on the west side, that it looks like there's a strip there, reminds me of what we just went through on Memorial out there on the apartment buildings. Is there already an easement across that? This is two different property owners, right?
The Avenue's site plan showed access at that point.
Okay.
At that location. And it was never formalized with an easement, but it was laid out on their site plan in anticipation of a access back to Robert Rose. Robert Rose came along during the planning for the avenues, and after they were pretty much through the process, but not, not, not too late to be able to show something on the plans to accommodate, because we wanted to see that connectivity. Because the consequences of not having that connectivity is for your, people who are coming from Robert Rose, they'll have to make two left turns, one at Medical Center and then one back into Maple Grove or some other street to get back into the avenues. This will decrease friction on our major arterial, which is part of our overall management plan for Medical Center Parkway.
The access onto, from parcel four, the northern access on parcel four, where it says full access, will there be a left turn capability from Robert Rose to be able to turn into that so you can access parcel five?
Uh, yes, there will be an interconnection, Walter.
Yeah, we're, at that location, we are right at the end of what is currently striped as the, what we term as a suicide lane, common terms. So there may have to be some restriping there, starting to get into the channelization, but maybe some restripping whenever that comes about. And that property line could vary a little bit, that access point could vary a little bit, so we may or may not have to do that restripping.
Hey, Mr. Taylor, from the, if you were heading north on Medical Center Parkway and turning right onto Robert Rose, about how much distance is it, if you make the right turn and then right into Lot, Section 4?
Into 4?
Yeah.
I believe it's in the neighborhood of 300 feet.
So how many cars stacking is that, on average?
Fifteen, eighteen.
Fifteen, eighteen cars.
Matt, one other thing. These three points of access onto Robert Rose that you have coming in over here, same property owner owns the property on the other side, right?
Yes, sir.
When master planning that, I'm sure you're going to be taking these access points into consideration as well, because we're going to be running into situations where we're going to need to match those up as much as possible in the future, hopefully sooner than later.
Well, we, we hope, and certainly Mr. Taylor hopes that he will be responsible for master planning, but that's part of why we have this kind of document. In the event he's not, we've got something to show the next guy, what we've already been talking about and are expecting. This will, this will go down as best available information, and it will be brought out as a guide to help the next guy to understand what's going to be expected. And yes, we do want them to align with each other, and we don't want them to be cattywampus in such a way as to cause a safety or a traffic impediment.
You brought up the multifamily site. I'd have to come back in for rezoning.
It's on the agenda today at the very last.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt.
There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item B, Robert Rose Village West, Lot 1, preliminary plat on 1.84 acres, zone Commercial Highway and GDO1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Maple Grove Drive, North Church LLC developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. The next item on our Gateway Design Overlay portion of our meeting is to consider a preliminary plat for Lot 1 of the property we just reviewed. We reviewed a master plan for this property, and there apparently is somebody interested in moving forward with a portion of it. So the lot that's identified on Lot 1 is located at the corner of Medical Center Parkway and Maple Grove Drive. I've pointed toward it on the map that you have before you. The property is approximately 1.8 or 1.84 acres in size and is zone CH, and is also located within our Gateway Design Overlay District 1 overlay. It has access to both Maple Grove Drive and to Medical Center Parkway. However, the, this property will share that access with future development, which will be an added benefit to the traffic and circulation for this property and for what we currently have on Medical Center Parkway. The, and I've, let's see, I've given you more information on that in the staff comments. The preliminary plat appears to be in relatively good order. The engineer, Mr. Matt Taylor, was able to address our comments, so I see nothing that should hold this up if you decide to approve the preliminary plat. They will need to submit, of course, construction plans that need to be approved by the city engineer. And I believe the next item will be, or I do know the next item will be to consider a final plat for this property. And so this is the initial and final design review for the preliminary plat for Lot 1 of what we're calling the Robert Rose Village West property. And Mr. Taylor, did you want to add anything at this time? If you have any questions, he's available.
Any questions from the planning commission? Now we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final item under the Gateway Design Overlay is Robert Rose Village West, Lot 1, a final plat for one lot on 1.84 acres, zone Commercial Highway and GDO1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Maple Grove Drive, North Church LLC developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. The next item is to consider the final plat for the preliminary plat of the master plan we just approved in, or in the previous two items. This final plat is being reviewed and recommended for you to approve it as an integrated subdivision. Although we do not have a site plan yet, we have been informed that that will be coming in the very near future. And because the site plan and subdivision are being reviewed so close, it's our recommendation and this, and the applicant's request that you approve it as an integrated subdivision site plan. It's for the property located on the corner of Medical Center Parkway, Maple Grove Drive, Lot 1, which is, again, 1.84 acres, zone CH and GDO1. Mr. Taylor was able to address the staff comments that we issued to him last week, and the plan therefore is in good order, and staff would recommend any approval you make be subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Any questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the Gateway Design Overlay portion of our agenda. Moving on to Plats and Plans, like I alluded to, we have two items coming off the consent agenda that I'll add on the front of this, because those plats are right at the top of our list here, it'll save us from having to fish down in there. We'll make Item E from the consent agenda the first item here. That will be Chestnut Hill, Section 5, a preliminary plat for four lots on 1.62 acres, zone RS15 and RS12, located along County Farm Road, Bob Parks developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you again. Our next item is to consider a preliminary plat for Section 5 of the Chestnut Hill subdivision, which is located just south of County Farm Road. This is Section 5 of that subdivision, and a master plan has been included in the plans that are laid out on your desk and also in your PDF. Lot, or Section 5 consists of four lots and 1.62 acres, and it's zoned both RS15 and RS12. However, the, the guiding setbacks will be from the RS15 zone. Minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, and each of, each of the four proposed lots meet and exceed that minimum lot requirement. We did take a look at the preliminary plat, and after receiving the revised plan, still were not certain that the engineer understood what we were trying to communicate with them about the drainage and how it should be managed and how that applies to our subdivision regulations. So we wanted to be able to discuss that further, so we've asked that it be taken off the consent agenda so it can be discussed further. We did, however, meet with the engineer for the project, which is Mr. Bill Huddleston, who's in the audience this afternoon, and if you have any questions for him directly or if you needed to hear from him, he'll be glad to come up and talk to you. And we had a meeting this morning, and he understands what we are, what we were trying to communicate through the plans and through the responses to the staff comments, and understands how to manage it and understands how he can manage it and make it comply with our subdivision regulations. So I feel confident that, well, I'll say that, okay. I feel confident that he'll be able to revise the plan and that it, you could approve it, so it's subject to the conditions. And the condition would be that the drainage that currently does not meet the subdivision regulations should be, should be designed so that it does comply with the construct, so that it does comply with subdivision regulations, and that those construction plans also receive city engineer approval. I think Mr. Huddleston believes he can do that. I don't know where he is. Yeah, yeah, he, I think, do you want to have anything to say at this time? No? Okay. So I think he's had a talk with his staff and will be able to address those comments. And then we'll revise the preliminary plat, and then the final plat that will come in will also reflect those changes.
It's unusual, we have, ever have Mr. Huddleston turning down a chance to speak, so.
He'll have his chance a little bit later.
We'll take advantage of this while we can here. Any questions for, from members of the planning commission?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you address this and I missed it, I apologize. Do these lots 60 and 61, are they just considered basically RS15, as far as you're concerned, I mean, when the zoning line splits down the middle of the lot?
The majority of the lot is RS15, so we've considered it RS15 as far as minimum lot size and setbacks and...
Anything else?
Since it's the more restrictive zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Do not, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item, the next item would be Item D from the consent agenda, Chestnut Hill, Section 4, a final plat for four lots on 1.4 acres, zone RS15 and RS12, located along County Farm Road, Bob Parks developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. And this next item is to consider the final plat for Section 4 of the Chestnut Hill subdivision, which is located south of County Farm Road, just across from Belvedere Court. The, the very same reason for asking for the previous preliminary plat to be moved to regular gen, item is the same reason we wanted this one to be moved, because we were not certain that the design team understood what we were trying to communicate to them. And so we, the meeting that we had this morning, we also discussed this Section 4 final plat for Chestnut Hill. I believe this came up, too, at the preliminary plat stage and, and how the stormwater or the rainwater should be managed, and we did communicate with them, with Mr. Huddleston this morning about what our concerns were, and he understood clearly after having that meeting, and that he'll be able to revise these plans, reflect those changes, so that they will be, they will meet our subdivision regulations. So we would ask that if you decide to approve this, which I think that it's ready to be approved, that you make that subject to the drainage to be designed so that it meets our, conforms with our subdivision regulations, and that any future construction plans also are designed to meet with our subdivision regulations, and that the city engineer would be required to approve those plans, which is fairly standard. Otherwise, I think we'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Getting back to Mrs. Jones' question, rear and side setback lines between the differences between RS12 and RS15, are there any?
There is. The side setback for RS15 is 12 and a half feet, RS12 is 10 feet. They're minor, they're not very much.
Okay, well, for building accessory structures on the back portions of these lots right here, which one are you going to go by?
The accessory struc, detached accessory structure setbacks are the same for any single-family residential lot.
Okay, so what about it?
Regardless of the zoning, if it's detached or more than five feet from the house, and it's required to be five feet from the side and rear property lines, cannot be located in the front yard, you can't put your storage shed in your front yard, and it, it can't be located in any kind of easement, so no drainage easements or any landscape easements that'd be there. So that, that's with all residential zones.
Okay, so you don't see any problem on the zoning being different for the back third of these lots approximately?
I don't believe so.
In the future? Okay. I was just trying to avoid any problems we might, you know, for the BCA that might come up, looking out after Mr. Halliburton, since he's not here.
We, we really counsel people real good on their setbacks nowadays. We don't have as many variances as we used to have.
That's true. Okay, any other questions? Ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to Item A, 7A, River Watch, Lot 1, master plan for 41.74 acres and preliminary plats. We'll move on to Item A, 7A, River Watch, Lot One, master plan for 41.74 acres and preliminary plat for one lot on 1.4 acres, Zone Commercial Highway, located along Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway, Mark Pertle is the developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to consider a master plan and preliminary plat for subdivision called River Watch. This subdivision is Zone CH, Highway Commercial District, and is located along Warrior Drive and along Highway 99. The, um, the master plan shows six commercial lots and one multifamily residential lot on a total of 41.74 acres. Property may look familiar to you because within the past couple of years, it was rezoned from a planned development to the bulk zone CH and RM16. The property owner has someone who is interested in one of the lots, Lot One, which is located on the corner of Warrior Drive and Highway 99 and New Salem Highway. And so to create that lot, of course, the, um, the developer will need to demonstrate that the lot meets some of our minimum standards with the preliminary plat and with the final plat. This preliminary plat shows the utility extensions and any future roadway connections. And you can see from the master plan that a public right-of-way will run through the property. By looking at the master plan, you can see, I don't think you can tell it, by looking at the zoning or ortho map. And that right-of-way is not being dedicated or constructed at this time. There's no need for it because Lot One will not have direct access to it. However, there are some access easements that you can see throughout the lots that show that they are sharing the access points to reduce the number of driveways that exit onto Warrior Drive and to, onto New Salem Highway. We would like to still see, and I don't think the plans have shown this because we looked at them yesterday, the driveways that are located on the opposite side of New Salem Highway, so where there currently are developments and there's driveways there. We'd like to see those on the master plan. That'll help us do a little better job lining up roads and just do a better job reviewing these plans. But other than some details, this preliminary plat and master plan are in relatively good order, and it's consistent with what we've been anticipating in this area. Mr. Bill Huddleston here, is here this afternoon, and he's representing the applicant. I don't know if anybody else is here representing the applicant as well. But if you have any questions about the plan, he'd be glad to answer them. I'd be glad to answer them as well. Otherwise, we'd recommend that you make any approvals subject to all staff comments.
Any questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item B, Johnson Controls in Addition, Site Plan for 91,086 square feet, industrial building on 17.96 acres, Zone Heavy Industrial, located at 1501 West Malloy Lane, Gray Construction is the developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you. And our next item is to consider a site plan for Johnson Controls, which is located along West Malloy Lane. And you can see that on the map that I've shown before you. It's near the terminus of West Malloy, the beginning of South Malloy, or the opposite, however you'd like to say that. There's an existing industrial development located on that site known as Johnson Controls. And Johnson Controls, um, has hired Gray Construction to develop some plans for them for an expansion of the industrial use. So what you have before you is a 91,086 square foot industrial building expansion that's divided into two phases. The proposed improvements, which have been divided into, Phase One of the proposed improvements consists of 42,000, approximately 42,000 square feet, and Phase Two consists of approximately 49,000 square feet. The property is zoned heavy industrial, and the proposed use is permitted by right within that HI zone. The expansion will be, will come at the rear of the building, so it'll expand the rear of the building toward the interstate. You can see that in the plans that you have before you. So they will be doing some parking lot modifications and some onsite access changes, but nothing to the public rights of way. The proposed building is a one-story building, and the plan should have renderings of those buildings. I don't have anything to put on the screen for you. I didn't get a PDF of that. But these plans are in relatively good order. We still aren't satisfied with the landscaping plan. They're still, haven't responded to those landscape comments effectively, so I think that we could probably continue to work with them and get them on the right path if, maybe set up a meeting with them and our urban environmental department so that we can get those worked out, those details worked out. Otherwise, the site plan is in relatively good order. I would recommend that you subject your approval on all the staff comments. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I think Mr. Duffy, who's representing the construction team, is here. Yeah, he is. And so if you have any questions directly for them, they'll be glad to answer them for you.
To help, to help with this discussion about the landscape and to help with the applicants, we did meet with them back in December, wasn't it? And we talked generally. We want to give them credit where credit is due, but they've also got to help us to know where credit is due. They don't show us existing landscape and existing tree masses to the degree that we need to know so we can give them credit. Also, in the large maneuvering areas for the trucks, we understand that landscape islands out there and that are going to be run over. So we asked that they cluster those over to the side, which is just fine, and they're showing an area, but they're just showing simple grass. They need to plant some trees in those areas. And I think we discussed that, but your plan is devoid of those trees. And maybe with some help by meeting with our landscape, uh, city urban environmentalist?
Yes, sir.
He can work with you and show you just what you need to do. He's, in fact, the inspection here for me.
Okay, well, my name is Bill Duffy, and I'm with Gray Construction, representing Johnson Controls. Uh, yes, we, we're meeting with Johnson Controls tomorrow to iron out what they would be willing to, to plant there as far as trees up near the building. Uh, that they were, they were originally against that, but we may put bushes if that would be sufficient in the grassy areas. Uh, we'll talk it over with the Johnson Controls tomorrow and then get in touch, if we can, with the port of culture.
That's the way we'd like to do it.
Okay.
Thank you for working with us on that. Any other questions or comments?
Move for approval subject to all staff comments.
And subject to working out the landscaping plan with the planning director and city urban environmentalist.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C, College Center, Site Plan for Multifamily Development on Three Acres, Zone RM16, located along Old Las Castas Road, Rashid Agawal is the developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to consider a site plan for multifamily development located along Old Las Castas Road. This project came up to you last month. However, the applicant requested to be withdrawn from the agenda to work on the plans a little bit more and I think work out some more of the details and to come up with more complete plans to submit to you. So what you have now is a site plan for 51 dwelling units on 3.01 acres, Zoned RM16, multifamily residential district. 16 dwelling units are permitted per acre on, in that zone district. And so that's a total of 48 dwelling units. The request is to allow 51 dwelling units, and that is because the developer's proposing to provide some amenities which do qualify for density bonuses. Those amenities have been reviewed by both the planning director and myself, and the planning director has given his approval that they do qualify according to the standards in our zoning ordinance. So those additional three dwelling units would be permitted with those density bonuses, which also, which include bike racks and, and some amenities inside the, um, the leasing center. The, um, this property was previously zoned PRD, and you can see probably from the zoning that it still says PRD, and that's because an ordinance was recently passed to change the zoning from PRD to RM16. That will be coming, becoming effective in the near future, however, it's not yet. So any approval of the site plan should be subject to the rezoning of this property becoming effective. And that's something that's not out of the ordinary that we oftentimes do. We will subject approval based on that becoming effective if it's been through at least one reading with the city council. Let's see. There were some architectural illustrations that were brought to you during the rezoning process which were neat, and they were something that's a little bit different and quite frankly, I think shocked staff that Mr. Agawal was proposing to build these in our community. At the time I prepared these staff comments, I had no illustrations for you, but I did receive, I think, yesterday morning, I received some renderings of the proposed buildings. So you don't have them in your package, but I do have them available on the screen, well, in just a minute, I suppose. Oh, one more. And so the renderings that were submitted to us do in fact confirm that the type of development that was proposed during the rezoning process is in fact what Mr. Agawal is moving forward with. It is a masonry structure, and it's got more of what I think we consider an urban feel. It's not that typical suburban apartment that we see in most of our community, but it does have that more urban feel. And so if you'd like to take a look at that, it's on the screen. The, um, the design team was able to address most of our staff comments. I think that there are relatively few of those that are still outstanding. We do need to work with them on the landscaping plan. I think, well, I don't think, but I know, I keep saying I think, I'm sorry. That the, the landscape architect for this project got involved at a later stage and didn't quite have enough time to submit a plan and get staff comments from us. You'll see that the site plan say to submit a landscape plan. Because we didn't have one, we couldn't really provide specific comments. However, we did get from Mr. Huddleston's office a revised landscape plan, and it, it's much improved compared to what the landscape plan, um, looked, looked like before, because it's actually designed by a landscape engineer, or landscape architect. Mr. Urban Environmental Department, sorry, he threw me off. I saw somebody creeping up behind me. Our urban envi, urban environmental department has reached out to the landscape architect and has communicated to them what their concerns are. I think that they can be worked out. If you decide to approve this plan, they can be worked out after this meeting. I would request that you make any approvals subject to all staff comments and that you also require them to be worked out prior to the applicant applying for any building permits. So we want to avoid any potential confusion on the part of the applicants or on the city staff or the design team with having various versions of plans roaming around. But we want the plans to be fleshed out in good order before they even submit to building and codes. I think that's a good practice, and I believe that Mr. Huddleston was in agreement with that, that he's willing to, in his company, to work on these and get them in good order and then submit them to the building codes department. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Mr. Huddleston's here this evening, not Sam Huddleston, but Mr. Bill Huddleston, who can answer questions you may have specifically about the plan. Otherwise, we'd recommend any approvals be subject to all staff comments.
Any questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's try that again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed. Motion carries. I know my hearing's probably failing a little bit these days. 3343 Memorial Boulevard Site Plan for Multifamily Development on 12.7 acres, Zone PRD, located along Memorial Boulevard, west of Thompson Lane. Arlington Development Company is the developer. Ms. Healy?
Thank you. Our last site plan under the Plats and Plats, Plats and Plans section of our meeting today is to consider a site plan for multifamily development that's located south of West Thompson Lane, located west of Memorial Boulevard, and located north of Kings Ridge Drive. This property was recently, um, a public hearing was held recently to rezone this property from its CH, Commercial Highway Zone, to PRD, Planned Residential District. That has been, had a public hearing at both the Planning Commission and City Council levels. However, it's not yet passed third and final reading, and so this is a similar situation to the previous agenda item. The zoning ordinance will become effective 15 days after that third and final reading, but it's not yet become effective. However, the design team is watching that process closely. So any approvals that you make for this plan would need to be made subject to the zoning becoming effective. This is probably still fresh on your mind since this went through the process, but it is to rezone 12.7 acres from CH to PRD, Planned Residential District. You looked at, reviewed, and approved a program book for this property. And the plan that you have before you conforms to that program book which you reviewed and approved. It does include a connection to West Thompson Lane to the north, includes a, with a shared, through a shared access drive, includes a connection to Memorial Boulevard with a shared access drive adjacent to the future Camino Real, which you approved a site plan for last year. And also has a connection to Kings Ridge Drive to the south, and I know that was a subject which you reviewed very closely. The plan, or the, the design team has been able to address most of our staff comments. However, there are still some outstanding staff comments. We would like, similar to the last project, for you to condition any approvals you make, of course, subject on all staff comments, but on those being worked out prior to the issuance of, or prior to the applicant applying for building permits. So we want to make sure that the plan is in good order, and then they take that set of good order plans to codes department to apply for their building permits. I believe Mr. Code and Mr. Huddleston are here this afternoon, and they're representing the project. I don't know if Mr. Code has a presentation or he would like to go through details of the plan. I believe he does. We also have a material sample board, you can come on up, that is much too heavy for anybody on the planning or engineering staff to lift. I suspect in City Hall. If Mr. Code is, thinks he's got the brawn, then he can pick it up. Otherwise, it's behind, well, he probably does, I'm sorry. I'm sure. It's very heavy, though.
Mr. Code, good afternoon.
Otherwise, you can look at it behind Carolyn.
Good afternoon. We're pleased to be here before you today, looking for site plan approval for 3343 Memorial. The sample board is here and has been at City Hall. We're willing to work with the staff and finalize any of the outstanding issues, and really are here to answer any questions you might have.
Can you pick it up?
As long as we have a medevac team right here to help me get back up, yes, we could.
Any questions from Mr. Code?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laid you out of light today. There's no questions or concerns. We're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, uh, motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda. Moving on to new business, we have, uh, six items under new business today, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 1.77 acres along Deal Lane to be rezoned from PCD to RM16. Mr. Larry Talbert is applicant. Mr. Trade Lot?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located along the east side of Deal Lane, just south of the TSC store. This property is zoned as part of the PCD that enabled the TSC store back several years ago. The owners of that found out that they did not need that for the store. They, it's immediately adjacent to some townhomes and actually owned by the same people who own the townhomes. They desire to have the property rezoned to RM16, the same as the townhomes, so that they can basically extend that development over to it. This is, would be a rezoning from PCD to RM16, and it was 1.77 acres. The plan shows about 23 units, and I think that's a realistic development plan. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer your question, answer them. I think the applicants have a representative here if you want to hear from them. Otherwise, they'd like to have it scheduled for a public hearing, and we'll be prepared at the public hearing for March 6th.
March 6th. Does any of you have any questions of the applicants?
Move instead of public hearing, March 6th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a zoning application for approximately 16.1 acres along Memorial Boulevard and Iron Gate Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to Commercial Highway. James B. Haynes Family Real Estate is the applicant. Mr. Trade Lot?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located to the west of Memorial Boulevard. It consists of two parcels. The first parcel is .9 acres, and it's located north of Iron Gate Boulevard adjacent to Wyndham Wood Drive. It's a portion of a larger parcel of about three acres that is sandwiched between Wyndham Wood Drive and the Kroger's Center. The zoning line dates back to, well, time before I became planning director, that established the commercial part. Wyndham Wood Drive was constructed as part of the Kroger's Center when it was developed. And what we want to see, what the applicant wants is to zone all that property bounded by the Kroger's, by the office development to the north, by Wyndham Wood and Iron Gate, to be zoned in one classification. They do not view RS-15 as the appropriate zoning. They would like to have it to be Commercial Highway. So they need to schedule that for a public hearing. The other portion of the request is for about 15.9 acres or so to be rezoned from RS-15 to Commercial Highway along Memorial Boulevard. so to be rezoned from RS15 to Commercial Highway along Memorial Boulevard. This consists of a strip that extends from the post office, almost, uh, right there beside the Bojangles, the post office drive that comes out to Memorial, from there southward to Adams Place to a depth of 350 feet. There's a total of about 98 acres in that tract bounded by Iron Gate Boulevard, Memorial, the Ravenwood subdivision, and, um, Adams Place. They're looking at just the front portion of it to be zoned. They, they have basically long-term plans for the development of that tract, but they aren't anywhere near mature. They feel a need to, to move forward with, uh, creating some, uh, out parcel opportunities, sort of a, um, a playoff of the Walmart development to the south, and they view that they're best suited to, to provide those. So they can do that and still not intrude into the residential area to the north. They're very much aware of a need to buffer the Adams Place. In fact, on their, uh, concept plan, a copy of which is with your materials, they're showing that they will be providing a, um, a type D buffer along through there. Uh, this , uh, matter needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. You'll be asked to prepare a recommendation for City Council. And I would suggest that both these items could be the same night. I'm going to advertise them as separate items and list them separately for public hearings, because some people may not be interested in the first and may be interested in the second. And that way, it gives them a better chance to break down their comments.
Mr. Murfree, did you have some comments for us?
Just, just briefly, and I've got a, a board here to Mr. Huddleston prepared for us. Um, I don't know the best place to put that for, for purposes. I just have to stick it up here.
Let your assistant help you there.
And you can turn the easel if you need to, Mr. Murfree?
Vanna Huddleston can give you a hand.
They don't teach you how to do anything practical in law school, so putting up easels is not part of my, uh, my expertise. But, uh, uh, basically what we've got is some out parcels on what was the Jimmy and Harriet Haynes property. It's now owned by the, uh, Haynes Family Partnership. Um, those would be commercial out parcels along Memorial Boulevard, uh, in keeping with the basic development, uh, the basic development of Memorial Boulevard, which is Commercial Highway. Um, you've got the Walmart property going in, uh, just down the street, across the street, and we feel it's in keeping with, um, the long-term trend in that area and what's being built, uh, currently in that area. And then we've also asked for a remnant parcel, which is just kind of a little, little spot that, uh, that kind of has been, uh, orphaned, so to speak, uh, to be zoned, uh, Commercial Highway as well. Um, so those are our, our two pieces of property. Uh, we feel it's an appropriate land use. Um, we're not going to be abutting any residential subdivisions. Uh, Adams Place is the, is the only adjoining property owner that we feel that we probably need to address, uh, and approach. Um, other than that, uh, the adjoining uses are, uh, that, uh, remaining Haynes property and then some other commercial properties as well. So, uh, with that, we would just ask you to set it for a public hearing.
How much, how much total Haynes property is there, even though that, yeah?
It's approximately 90 acres.
90 acres, and you requesting 16.1 acres of?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just a very small portion of it.
All the property to the east side of the, uh, small parcel up on Iron Gate, is that all, uh, part of the Kroger development?
The, uh, portion that is, uh, RS15 is part of a, about a three-acre tract that is, came about as a result of the Kroger development, but it's not part of the Kroger development. It's still owned by the Haynes family. And, uh, it's, um, it, I think, when Mr. Murfree said it's sort of orphaned, I think he's kind of right. The RS15 just dates back to before the streets were built and, um, the front part towards Memorial was, was already zoned Commercial Highway.
Well, that answers my question, because I was trying to figure out why you'd want Commercial Highway on that small of a, a piece right there, but it's just going to be joining on to the rest of the, uh, property there. It's already zoned Commercial Highway.
Right. It's part of a larger parcel. It's of about three acres.
Okay.
Just kind of leftover.
Well done, Mr. Murfree.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Lang.
But, Mr. Stradalot, you, you're going to do those as, as two separate, is what you said. I think that-
Yes, we, we will.
Yeah, totally, yeah. Any other questions? We're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We set, uh, the two public hearings for March 6th, one for the 15.2 acres and one for the .9 acre tract.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, the next item is annexation request for approximately 1.02 acres along South Church Street at Joby Jackson Parkway. Mr. PJ Patel is applicant. Mr. Stradalot?
Yes, sir. The, uh, subject property is located along the west side of South Church Street, uh, on the south side of Linford Drive. Linford would be basically why, uh, would, used to have been County Farm Road extended to the, to the west, that has been renamed to Joby Jackson Parkway. Linford Drive is a part of, um, subdivision. I guess that'd be the Linford Oaks subdivision that was developed, uh, back in the seventies or, or sometime about that timeframe. The request is to have the first two parcels on the south side of Linford at the intersection annexed into the city, so they can provide, be, uh, recipients of city-provided services. Uh, some of these services, um, well, I'm not sure what all they will be, but, uh, because we have not completed our annexation study, but the applicants very much want to be in the city. Uh, we would suggest that if we move forward with the annexation of these properties, that we should include the right of way of Linford Drive. A portion of Linford Drive, right at the intersection, is being improved with a, uh, right turn that goes with the Walmart, and that has to do with the signalization of that intersection. Uh, we expect that, uh, if, uh, this property comes in and is, uh, zoned Commercial, as is the next request, we would see a site plan in the future. Uh, I'm going to be, um, demanding that that street be upgraded, because it was built as a residential street. So if it is, uh, commercialized, I think that we would, uh, would expect to see, uh, improvements to the street. I've got mixed feelings about the rezoning, and I want to kind of lay them out for you, and I suspect that you have similar, um, mixed feelings. On, on one hand, this is an entrance into a subdivision. It's a subdivision that was, uh, developed for that purpose, uh, for residential purposes several years ago. The street was built in the county to residential street standards. Uh, changing the entrance is going to change the, the mood and the tempo of the subdivision. On the other hand, this property is directly across from the Walmart. The mood and tempo of that subdivision is going to change as a result of the Walmart. This intersection is going to become inter- signalized. Also, already, we're seeing, uh, commercialization along that stretch of South Church Street in the county. We've seen several applications for special permits, uh, with the county, uh, through the last, uh, couple of years. Some of them have enjoyed more success with the county than others. But, uh, I've, we've seen some amount of commercialization already beginning in that area. So I, I'm seeing sort of a mixture of, um, feelings here, and I think that it may be time that we, we begin a, a public hearing process and gain some, some public input. Uh, I think that the public will help give us some idea of what the prevailing mood is and how they view the, the future, which I think is going to be an important part of, of this planning exercise. Something else, I think that the property immediately to the south, we're hearing some, um, inquiries about the next several parcels, not just the next one or two, but the next several parcels, that there may be some interest in, uh, seeing some, uh, commercialization of those properties. They're not part of the subdivision, and they are directly across the street from the Walmart. Their plans have not matured to the point yet where they're ready to come forward, but I, I expect that there'll be something over the course of the next, uh, two years as Walmart gets under construction and then gets opened up, as, uh, John, the Joby Jackson Parkway gets, uh, reconstructed and gets opened up. So I'm kind of laying that out for you to, to think about. Uh, the applicants have Representative Mr. Bratcher here. He's, uh, present to speak on their behalf if you have any questions of, of them. Uh, otherwise, we need to move forward with a, uh, scheduling of public hearing. If there's any additional area that you think we should study at this time, and perhaps we should study the whole frontage of, of South Church Street all the way down to Volunteer Road, which is not shown on the illustration. Um, but, uh, if you feel there's additional areas we should study, we need to study them, and, uh, we'll include that in the feasibility study and plan services. I'll be very frank with you. If we're just studying these two parcels, I think we'll be ready for a public hearing on March 6th. If we want to expand the area dramatically, we probably would need some additional time.
Is the applicant prepared to, um, proceed with annexation request if the zoning request is denied?
I could, I would have to defer to him to answer that question. He said he does not think so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stradalot, these two lots, are they currently improved with residential homes?
Uh, y- yes, ma'am, um, they are. Uh, at least one of them is. Both, both of them? Both of them.
And, and this subdivision, what's the, is, what's the name of this subdivision?
Linford Oaks. It's the, it's the Linford Oaks subdivision.
I knew we'd have to get you up here sometime, Mr. Bratcher. It's good to see you.
How old is this?
Seventies.
In the seventies? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Stradalot, I have a question regarding, you said road improvement on the Linford side or on the Memorial side?
Well-
Or South Church?
It, it would be of the Linford Drive that fronts this. Uh, Walmart's already re- the city is already reconstructing the Joby Jackson side, and Walmart is doing some, through intersection improvements as part of their plan. Uh, but the portion of the street that goes beyond their improvements, right there at the intersection for the signalization, uh, they are substandard, and we would expect that with commercial development on this property, that they would bear the burden of upgrading it to a commercial section.
Representative, are you hearing those requests? Are you in position to?
Think he knows it. We've had that discussion already.
We have met and talked about it. Yeah, we feel, and the people who, the property owners are out there know that they're here for a big change with, obviously with the Walmart coming across the street, with the signalization of that intersection. I think the residential ambiance of that being on a four-lane major road and with the commercial across the street is, is something that's fleeting pretty fast, and the people along that road are coming to realize that. It, uh, their residential appeal is not there like it once was.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Stradalot, do you, you say that the two parcels to the south are, you know there's something going on with those. I mean, would it make sense for us to include those in this? I mean, if we know they're coming soon anyway?
I'm already having some discussion with representatives, uh, but I'm, I'm, I feel that, just to be very frank with you, I feel that we're probably going to see a bigger request, and it may be just as well to, to wait, because those don't have any access to Flor- to, uh, Linford Drive.
Right.
And they may be able to have their own access to, um, uh, South Church Street that will offer a different plan of services than, than these two. So, you know, sometimes I bring you a map and say suggested, uh, other areas. I didn't do that this time because I didn't feel that I was ready to suggest them, because I think we're a little, and it's something else that plays into this equation. Those property owners may have a little bit different feeling about their plans, once they hear a little bit of public input.
Well, that's what I was thinking more about, getting all those people out now and getting them out again. You know, if, if that one's right behind it, but, but they don't make sense to be together, that's, uh...
Well, March 6th on the annexation request, then we'll go on to the zoning. I'm just, uh, I'm just wanting to make sure that the applicants realize that if we, if we do have the public hearing for annexation request, and that is approved, that if, if we do not recommend the approval of the zoning, then they would have to withdraw their application at that time, right?
Uh, they would, it would be up to them whether they wanted to, but I would expect they would want to.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move to set a public hearing, March the 6th.
Second.
6th. Please have a pot of coffee ready for us that night, will you? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, the zoning application for the same property, 1.02 acres located along South Church Street at Joby Jackson Parkway to be zoned, Commercial Highway simultaneous with annexation. Mr. PJ Patel is applicant.
Uh, yes, sir. This is the same property. Uh, the application is for Commercial Highway simultaneous with its annexation. We should have both the, uh, public hearings for annexation and zoning the same night, so March 6th would be the appropriate time.
Okay. Any discussion? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We set a public hearing for March 6th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item E, zoning application for approximately 21.9 acres along Robert Rose Drive to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM16 North Church LLC is applicant. Mr. Stradalot?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located along Robert Rose Drive, south of the Medical Center Parkway and adjacent to the Avenue Shopping Center, uh, right beside the belt. The, um, property is shown as purple on the map that's included with your agenda materials, and, uh, it was part of the master plan that we discussed, the GDO master plan for the, um, Robert Rose West development that we saw earlier today, Rob- Robert Rose Village, excuse me. The, uh, application is to rezone the property from Commercial Highway as it's currently zoned to RM16 for the development of a multifamily complex. The, um, property consists of approximately 21 acres, so they're looking at the better part of 300 apartment units on the property. The, um, project, uh, from what I've gathered from discussing with the, um, applicants, they're looking at a pretty nice quality development. They're very much aware they're in the Gateway Design Overlay District. Otherwise, they'd probably be looking at a planned development application. But because they're in the Gateway Design Overlay District, they know they're going to be bringing in their plans forward for architectural review and initial, uh, review and final review with the Plan Commission. So they feel that, uh, the RM16 gives them a little bit more flexibility on the front end, uh, as they, as they move towards the design. They're also aware of the master plan that you've, um, looked at today. They're aware of the connectivity issues, uh, and they're ready to move forward. The, I don't expect that there's going to really be a lot of public participation, since this is remote from any existing subdivisions. Uh, I will be contacting the owners, uh, of the avenues, uh, having, uh, contact with them, uh, but I expect that they're going to be generally supportive of it, because during their plans, when we went through that process, they viewed a multifamily complex immediately adjacent, within walking distance of their property. That's a good thing. They viewed it as customers that would probably be, um, very much in related with their, uh, uh, development. So we need to schedule this for a public hearing. March 6th would seem to be an appropriate time.
Any comments?
Move to set a public hearing, March 6th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Final item would be PUD Amendment Application for approximately 44 acres along Rucker Lane. Adamson Park Investments are the applicants.
Yes, sir. The, the subject property is located along the west side of Rucker Lane. This property is part of the Merrimack PUD that, uh, was approved back in, uh, 2005. The, uh, application is to allow for an amendment of, uh, a, approximately 44 acres that, uh, extends from Rucker Lane over to Merrimack Boulevard. It includes the Old Mansion. It includes the, uh, amenity center, swimming pool. The, um, the plan is, um, really, uh, an amendment plan. They're looking at changing up the area around the mansion. I, I think that the applicants have, um, have had very good intentions about incorporating the mansion into a, um, the plan as an amenity area, but they're finding that that just doesn't seem to work. Uh, so they would like to be able to allow it to be, um, maybe move in a different direction, so it could be sold separately, and maybe even be used as something like a bed and breakfast, a wedding, uh, reception area or a wedding area. It has some ambiance that is, is really wonderful for the right person who's willing to take on a challenge, but for a, uh, an amenity center, it, it just doesn't seem to be working out. It becomes a very big liability for the Owners Association. Also, uh, they're looking at, uh, adding some additional direction to the, um, swimming pool and amenity area. There is a program book that you received. It's a, a relatively, relatively simple plan, but it's a relatively simple request. Uh, you, you should have had it courier delivered to you. You've hopefully had a chance to review it. We have with us Mr. Bob Parks. He's representing the applicants, as he is one of the applicants, co-applicants. Uh, he's here to answer your questions. Mr. Parks, do you have any comments you'd like to make as well? Uh, he has indicated that he has none, but he will be glad to answer your questions if you have any. This also needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. I'll, I'll add this. I think that he has been reaching out to the Owners Association, uh, and he's nodding vigorously that he has, uh, done so, so that they're on board, uh, or at least aware of the, uh, application.
Okay. March 6th again?
Uh, I believe it'll be ready.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We set a public hearing for March 6th.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That concludes, uh, our, our new business for the evening, for the afternoon, soon to be evening. Uh, staff reports and other business. Mr. Stradalot?
Well, yes, I would like to beg your indulgence. Um, Ms., um, Jako, would you please hand out an illustration? Uh, under the old adage, "When it rains, it pours," I have been poured upon, and, and you have been too, with the, um, uh, new business. We had a, a late application that came in just, um, about the time the agenda was going out, and, uh, Ms. Ely, or not Ms. Ely, but Ms. Jako was handing out an illustration of the area. This property is located along the south side of Hazelwood Street. It is currently zoned Commercial Highway and RM16. The owners are, um- The owners are Kathy and Wayne Nobles. They own a portion that's zoned Commercial Highway that fronts towards Highway 96. Period Construction. They own that longest rectangular-shaped piece that's zoned RM12 and Oakland Properties. They all are willing to come together and combine their property, along with another additional parcel that's already zoned RM16, for a multifamily development that's going to be related to the university for college kids. If they're going to get moving with a construction program to be open in 2014 for the college year, it is just absolutely critical that they get their application underway. Were this a place that was immediately adjacent to a residential subdivision and more remote or in a different portion of the community? I might be a little bit hesitant to bring this one up, but I don't think it's going to have a lot of controversy. First of all, it's zoned Commercial Highway and RM12. They can already build apartments on a portion of it. They're just wanting to combine the property to make for a better arrangement and have it all zoned to RM16. So, they're begging you to consider this under old -- under new business and to schedule it for a public hearing, and they very much would plead with you for it to be March 6 as well.
Okay. Do we need a motion to consider it today?
Well, that would be very nice and approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make we consider this item for our agenda today.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes March 6, Mr. Adelat?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Anybody need a motion?
Move for set a public hearing March 6.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Mr. Adelat, that was your one chance for staff reports and other business. I presume you don't have anything else. We stand adjourned. Thank you.